Councilor will come to order.
Councilor will come to the streets.
All rise and salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silence in honor of our veterans, servicemen and women, and those who have given the ultimate sacrifice. Clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Anderson. Counselor come out.
He's not here.
Counselor Condon.
Here.
Counselor Crowe.
Here.
Counselor Di Maria.
Here.
Counselor Matheson.
Yeah.
Counselor Murphy.
Counselor O'Malley.
Counselor Spatafora.
Here.
Counselor Winslow.
Yes.
Counselor President Sika.
Under the provisions of the open meeting law, for those of you in attendance, please be informed that M A T V will be recording this evening's meeting, so just be aware, there will be audio and video recording of this meeting. First order of business.
The Mystic Watershed Association and the Friends of Malden River will appear before the City Council to discuss the Malden River Greenway and present the results of a human health risk study, which was completed last fall.
Counselor Murphy.
Thank you, Madam President. First of all, I want to thank everyone who came here this evening. This is going to be a very interesting night to hear about the risk, health risk survey, which is something that we've all been really waiting to hear a lot about. It has, I think we'll all be very excited with the news, to hear that we'll be able to move forward with a number of initiatives that I think we all want to see move forward. We have a couple of, three people here tonight that I'd like to introduce. We have Karen Buck, who is a friend of the Malden River, and I would say one of the fiercest advocates in the city for the water and water quality, whether she's out there doing cleanups or she's installing a boom or pulling trash out, she's, and Hugh, you're there too, sorry, hon. We have, so, we have a lot of dedicated people in Malden who really have pulled together to make sure that the city does not forget that we do have a piece of waterfront here and that we need to maintain it, and we need to make sure that it's a resource for all of our community. So Karen's going to have a couple of words to say, I believe, in a minute or two. We also have Amber Kristofferson, who is going to, I believe, open up for us this evening. She is the Greenways Director at the Mystic River Watershed Association, and she led the creation of the Malden River Greenway Vision Plan in 2017. And she'll be giving us an update on the Mystic River Greenway Project. We also are lucky to have with us Kathy Van Diver. She's a member of the Friends of the Malden River and also a member of the Center for Environmental Health Sciences at MIT. Two years ago, she facilitated an important research collaboration between MIT, the Mystic Valley River Watershed Association, and Gradient Corporation to produce an independent health risk study for boating on the Malden River. So Kathy is going to give us, you know, a presentation on the human health risk study for boating. This is going to be a little bit of musical cheers here, folks. We do have a presentation. We are also televised, so I know, as always, our counselors usually have some very interesting questions once a presentation has happened. So what we're going to do is we're going to get down to the audience to listen to the presentation. I'm going to ask you to hold your questions until the end. We will come back up to the podium, the dius dius, and then the question and answer period will begin. And then we will repeat that process for the second half of the second presentation and then come back up for any questions, so that all of the folks in the audience and also everyone listening to us at home can hear the questions and the responses. So with that, I'd like to invite Karen Buck up to the podium, if you would, say a couple of words, and then we will turn it over to either Kathy or Amber, depending on who's here. [laughter] Good evening. Thanks so much for everybody being here. I appreciate your time. I'm not going to say much. Kathy's going to start, actually, with the human health risk study, because Amber is biking on her way. I just wanted to say that we're running a City Nature Challenge on the Malden River this Sunday. If anybody wants to join us, it'll make a naturalist out of you and back quickly with the iNaturalist application. So that's on our Facebook page, so I just wanted to make that clear for everybody. So I'm going to hand this over to Kathy, and thank you.
Good evening, councilors, and also good evening to our group here. My name is Kathy Vandiver, as Barbara mentioned, and I'm here to present on the Malden River Human Health Risk Study that was done recently for boating.
Would you like us to come down now?
Yeah, that would be great. Thank you so much. I think you'll be able to see better.
I'm staying, I can see.
Are you good?
Yeah.
All right, great, okay. I'll begin. Well, I have a spoiler alert. If you look at the screen, you can see the news is favorable for boating. And favorable for boating, you know, really, how can it be true? Because we've heard so many stories and details from people in history about the contaminants present in the sediments for so many years of industrial use. And just to name a few, I'm sure that you're familiar with, are rubber factories, steel factories, chemical plants, and also leather tanning. And of course, we have had good warnings for, about health by officials, and I would like to mention, this is really very good, because no public health risk study was completed. And so precautionary warnings really are entirely appropriate for the fact that the studies were incomplete at the time. So this new study, which took place two years ago, has been thoroughly identified the hazards most recently, and also assessed the risks for boaters in accordance to both the state and national standards. So I'd like to help review a little bit of health information for you. Just because a harmful chemical is present doesn't mean that it is harmful in the amount present. The dose matters. And everybody knows about this, because you can certainly take aspirin, and if you take a lot of aspirin, the dose really does matter. An example of this, obviously, is things that we eat every day. For instance, anybody particularly interested in thinking about pears would notice that they actually contain formaldehyde, which is an embalming fluid, which really, most people don't think about when they're eating pears, right? So it's present in a very small amount, like 60 milligrams per kilogram or two and a half pounds, so no matter, right? So the other criteria for health is actually that you have to come in contact with a harmful chemical. So both dose and exposure matter. And so in this picture at the bottom, that's a little cartoon, you can see a person here, and they're running towards, it looks like a hazard. So let's think about what, how the chemical gets into the body. Can you name some ways in which they enter the body? I'm just curious if you'll think about it with me.
Ingestion.
Okay, eating, so ingestion, thank you.
Skin contact.
Excellent. Skin contact. We have a lot of territory in our skin for exposure, and is there one other one you can think of?
Inhalation.
Yes, inhalation. See the little vapors coming out of the hazard over there? I put those in to remind you, of course, that breathing can be harmful to your health, too. But actually, the exposure ends up also being related to dose and the amount. So I'd like to point out that both dose and exposure factors were included in the 2008, that was when it was completed health risk study for boating. So if you're curious about which, how the sampling study was done, there's a nice map on the right, and you can see, for locating yourself, the Medford Street Bridge and also the Route 16 Bridge. And you can see the boat houses that, places along where there is a boathouse where they were sampled, and the Malden Gentle Giant Boathouse with, of course, the high school areas for boating, and also the Tufts are the two runs marked in red. And then seven potential boating sites were suggested by various municipalities and were included in the study. Sampling was done in those areas. And we also took water samples as well. So I'd like to inform you a little bit more about this study being done, was actually a conservative study. And I know you have to explain the word conservative in this context. So here it is. It's that you maximize the exposures to the hazards present. You really maximize them when you do the calculations. And then the study also was really conservative in the sense that a study was done to think about what different types of boaters would be on their water, because they would be exposed for different lengths of time, for instance. So the occasional boater, there were six categories, and you can see a child, adult, a frequent boater. You can see a youth competitor, like your high schoolers, and also a collegiate competitor, and also, thinking ahead, an adult employee that might be working at a launch site. So they also applied both state and federal guidelines to these numbers as well. So I'm going to move next to show you an example of how the study was conservative when you're talking about a youth competitor, okay? So a high school student who is rowing on the river. So high school competitor, for instance, this is very conservative in the fact that, you know people are in high school for four years, but they put in the calculations as if you were rowing for eight years, okay? So you've got eight years of rowing. You row 340, sorry, 334 days per year in this conservative study. And also here, the boater each time wades into the sediments. There's no docks, there's lots of skin contact with sediments. Then the sediments are swallowed, every day rowing, a certain amount that's been calculated. But here's another one, the rower capsizes every day, that's put into the measurements that's exaggerated as well. And then, of course, there's more rowing, swallowing of water. So you can see a conservative study, the purpose of this is to create a safety margin by overestimating the exposures, okay? So you have that in there as a safety margin. So let's talk a little bit more about health risks now. This is really just a simple diagram on the right. If you look at the top, it's greater risks going up, and you can see least risks going down. And the target risk numbers in red are valuable for setting guidelines for public health. These are guidelines for public health policy. And if you look over, you might be surprised that there are actually two different health limits that are there. The EPA health limit is one in 10,000, which adding one cancer in the case of 10,000 people. And the Mass DEP decided to make their limit a little bit more stringent, and they said one in every 100,000 cases, one case added to 100,000. So you can see toward the bottom is the least risk. I would suggest that you don't look that much at the negative exponent, so there, you just look at the one in 100,000 or the one in 10,004, thinking about cancer risk, okay? So this system actually doesn't apply to personal risk. I'd just like to point out that the numbers can't predict personal risk. This is really a guideline for public health policy. And here on the right, you can see boater cancer risks that were done in the study, and there are many different, if I was going to point out here, there are many different lines that would come across in that green level below one in 100,000 limit. That's the great news. It turns out that no boating cancer risk exceeded the EPA's list of one in 10,000, and no boating cancer risk exceeded the Mass DEP limit, which is one in 100,000, a case of cancer to 100,000 people. And there's also another non-cancer risk, which was also calculated as well. Okay, so I want to show you that you did all those calculations for all seven of the sites, for the sediments where the exposure areas were, and also for each different kind of boater, for an adult, a child, a youth competitor, or a collegiate competitor, or the employee. So you can see overall that none of the risks are above the DEP, Mass DEP's target risk level, or the EPA's as well. And the other way of calculating risk was also done. So I'd like to turn to thinking about other health risks, and one of the other health risks actually is about microbial contaminations, and they're typical, actually, in urban waters, particularly after a heavy rainfall. And what's really great is the Mystic River Watershed Association has a boating advisory site where you can go and check out the boating levels for bacterial levels after a heavy rainfall. And the website's there, and it's very accessible. I went and looked at it today, by the way, and, because I was curious about after all this rain, but I don't think it's up yet for the boating season, so come back and check it again. Some takeaways now, I know the sediments don't pose a health risk that should prevent people from boating on the Malden River. And I know we've been really wondering about it for many years. And you should also check the Mystic Daily Boating Advisory for health, particularly on microbial levels after heavy rainfall. With climate change coming, I know that's really a particularly useful thing to have this, because besides microbial levels, there's also cyanobacteria which have appeared in the river, not necessarily in the Malden, but in the Mystic River. So it's nice to have this already in place. And then I would like to offer a little bit of advice, just because you know that it's always good to wash up afterwards, so I'd like to say that I put in a good word for moms, good advice, though, is to wash up after being on the river or any other place before dinner, for sure. We talk about ingestion and the ways of exposure, so this is good advice. And I'd like to point out who the partners are for this independent study. We've got Friends of the Malden River, Gradient Corporation, the MIT Center for Environmental Health Sciences, the Mystic River Watershed Association, Mystic Valley Development Corporation, the cities, all three of them, and also Priado Lane and Associates. Actually, the Mystic River Watershed Association did the, coordinated all the studies, and so we really particularly are pleased to acknowledge their work here, and I'm speaking for Andy Rysera, who is the scientist at the Mystic River Watershed Association, who conducted most of the actual sampling. And so there is time for questions as well, and so I know that Barbara wanted to make sure that we had time for questions, too. So I think I've done it in under 20 minutes, right? Thank you so much for listening, I really appreciate it.
Kathy, I wouldn't go too far.
Kathy, thank you so much for this. I know, having been at one time the project manager for the Malden redevelopment on overseeing the Malden River, I think it's great to always look at its information and confirm it. So can you tell us what chemical is driving even the risk that you see? What were there particular chemicals that were of greater risk that you find out in the river right now?
Well, the typical ones such as arsenic, and actually, I think in the study, they were talking about the fact that a lot of the arsenic that may be present in the river might be, might also be there because of just geological release, instead of just from factories.
So was, I know, you know, when we had done a study, there was something, the phthalates that came out of the Monsanto plant were ones that we found, so was that, was that, do you know the levels of this?
The suite, I'm sorry, I don't, I'm not familiar with the entire suite, but it was huge, the number of samples. It was very, very wide and broad of different types of chemicals. Anything that had been found in the past, they had made sure to keep it in, and search for it in this last round. And in fact, I'd like to point out that the sediment samples were sent to a state accredited lab, which was Alpha Analytics.
Okay, and then just in terms of the sampling of the sediments, was that done from shore, or did you do any deeper cores?
It was done through a boat, through boats, and actually doing grab samples from the bottom, and you bring them up.
So there wasn't any coring of this?
No, there was no coring. It was really, most of the water is going to be carrying from fluxes in the sediments up into the water.
Right, okay. No, I mean, wonderful job. I mean, I really appreciate the effort of everybody involved. I mean, it's great to see that over the past, you know, 15 years, that boating has become a very big activity on the river, and I think it's always good to confirm that that is safe, and that was some conclusion that was reached 15 years ago. And it gets good to confirm that, again, with more thorough analysis, and to know that our, you know, the boaters out there are safe. So I really appreciate you all, you know, taking that initiative and confirming that. So thank you.
Counselor Di Maria.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you so much for the wonderful presentation, Kathy Van Diver. Thank you very much. First question is, how long did this project take? When did this project occur?
The actual sampling took place over two summers. That's the reason why it spanned those two years. And there was a lot of back and forth between the Gradient Corporation, who does, is a world-class risk assessor, and they were very involved in helping to do the plan. So I'd like to point that out.
Okay, that's wonderful. Thank you very much to the Mystic River Watershed Association for bringing this to us. I think this is a first step in verifying that our Malden River is sailable and swimmable and...
Swimmable.
Well, we're getting, we're getting there, so this was a first step in that.
We, the analysis was for boating, just want to make sure that's really clear.
Boating, okay, there you go, for boating. Well, that's wonderful, so thank you very much.
Counselor O'Malley.
Thank you, Madam President. I echo my colleague's words, you know, just thank you to all the associated partners. I mean, this is quite an achievement. It's been many years in the making. I know that I came in later in the process, and it had been carried forward by so many great people, Friends of the Malden River first and foremost, Mystic River Watershed, you know, the fact that MIT is involved here is really a testament of how great a resource the Malden River really is. I think Malden residents, I mean, growing up here, I never knew there was a Malden River. And I'm a pretty active person, I used to be a park ranger, didn't know there was a Malden River even when I was a park ranger. Definitely heard about the Mystic River, but, you know, I think you just kind of think of Medford Street, and you keep on driving as you go by Comcast, and you're probably just going to Comcast. So now, so now that we have, you know, know that this is safe to enjoy, I've kayaked on it, I know that we've taken canoes out when we're cleaning it during our annual cleanups or semi-annual cleanups. So I think that the news is good, and Malden residents should come down to the Malden River. You know, there's walking paths over by Cambridge Health Alliance, there are walking paths over by Comcast, down by River's Edge, and soon to be down by the National Grid Site. I think that the vision of having more public access and having this kind of in our, I don't want to say, a two-belt to some degree, I'm really happy for that, and again, just thank you.
Well, I think that's a perfect lead-in also for Amber, who's going to speak to us next about the Greenways in a little while. That's great.
Counselor Spatafora.
Thank you, Madam President. Just to echo what the rest of the council have said, great presentation. Obviously, it's good the community gets the opportunity to hear that you can absolutely use a boat in there. I know we've established we're not swimming in there, which is good news. I'm one of the individuals who literally grew up in the banks of this river since I was a kid. It has definitely gotten cleaner in terms of the physical trash. I remember literally seeing, I remember literally seeing cars in there at one point. But my question is, when you do the testing, well, I have two questions. One is, on the testing, is there, I don't want to use the word safer areas, but when you, did you test the entire river? Is there some areas that are more susceptible to higher concentrations? And the second question, which might go into this, is after the big rainstorm, I know you said there's that website you can go on to access the numbers, do the sewers still empty into the Malden River? They don't. Because you see an awful amount of runoff, the oil going into, you shake your head, does it run in there?
We're talking about stormwater. Stormwater comes off of the, all the streets, and that also carries a lot of trash. We could get Karen up here to talk about the trash.
There are still combined sewer overflows, they're called, but...
Amber's the expert on this, so I'm calling her.
Because there's a gate right there at Canal Street.
So there are CSOs in the region, and so what that means is a combined sewer overflow, which means you have sewage and stormwater coming together, so in rain events is one.
With a lot of rain.
I don't know the details of what is actually draining into the Malden and what's here as far as CSOs, but it's, all river systems are connected, so even if you have one a distance away, you still have some trace bacteria.
Because you can physically see and smell after a big rainstorm, that river gets dirtier, but you see, you see more, I don't know if it's oil or, it is, and somebody told me, too, it's a natural piece, because there's creosol in the bed of that river, and that will come up, that will drip up, because I know occasionally they have to, they dam the river near 105 Canal, and they go in there and they clean the basin, so that the creosol doesn't come up. But after a rainstorm, it is nasty.
Yeah. I mean, the general rule of thumb is 48 hours after a rain event, you're in the clear. The other thing is, if any of you guys are on Twitter, we have a Twitter account called @SafeMystic, and that tweets out every day at 5:00 a.m., like what the boating outlook is for that day. And again, it's offline because of winter, we're not exactly sure what the day is that we turn that on, but, yeah, so that's, that's kind of the...
It's very convenient.
Yeah.
All right, there's only one question, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Counselor Crowe.
Thank you, Madam President. Just sort of building off some of the things that we talked about, that we know it's safe for boating, not swimming. So what is the next steps? How do we move it? So, you mean, because I think people not, they're just going to hear it's safe and not really know for boating, not swimming or fishing, anything. So do we have, what steps we're going to be taking as to kind of continue sort of the cleanup, or, you know, how, how is that all working?
Well, I think the major thing that people are looking for next is to, in order to make it into a public amenity, we have to think a lot more about trash. And so looking into the Friends of the Malden River and the Mystic River Watershed, looking into a better trash boom situation, and maybe a lot more public awareness that everything flushes off of the roads and streets that goes down into an outfall, into those storm drains is ending up in the river. And so in the long run, I think we all need to be encouraged to take part in helping the river in that way.
Great. Well, thank you, thank you very much for a very enlightening presentation.
Counselor Matheson.
into Friends of the Malden River and the Mystic River Watershed, looking into a better trash boom situation, and maybe a lot more public awareness that everything flushes off of the roads and streets that goes down into an outfall, into those storm drains is ending up in the river. And so in the long run, I think we all need to be encouraged to take part in helping the river in that way.
Great. Well, thank you, thank you very much for a very enlightening presentation.
Counselor Matheson.
Thank you, Chair. I loved it. Thank you for the presentation. It was very informative, especially that part about the pear and the formaldehyde. I mean, I don't know about the rest of the spectators, but I learned something from this. And I'm filling out your survey here. And Counselor Spatafora brought up what I was thinking, which was, you know, have we done any analysis into the debris, or the other forms of trash that have come down the river? Because I know, and I can wait and ask that question of Karen. If she's a better person, that's okay. But I'm very proud of the Malden River. You know, it's not the Medford River, it's not the Everett River, it's the Malden River. It's tidal water. And I really want to see this place clean. I want to see it accessible to people. I think it can be a source of pride and joy beyond what it is today. And this is a step in the right direction. So thank you again for your presentation. I'll save that question about the other stuff, because as you know, plastic is one of the things that we've been talking about, even in this council, as recently as last week. These bits of plastic that end up in our environment, they end up in the bird's stomach, they end up in the fish, and everywhere else in our environment. So it's something I think we all have to take pretty seriously in the future. So, thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much for this opportunity. And I forgot to mention that there is a little feedback form attached to the agenda that we brought with us today. And it's useful for us at the Center for Environmental Health Sciences at MIT to get some public response to presentations like this, whether or not they are answering the questions you want to have answered to. Thank you. Is there anybody left to ask?
Counselor Condon.
Thank you. Thank you for appearing tonight. We have our residents watching on TV. Is there anything the residents can do to their streets? Because after the rainstorm, you just see it flowing down the street into the storm drains. And I notice a lot of the trash is plastic bags, too, that end up in the Malden River. So, I mean, people, if they can clean in front of their homes, knowing that we're going to get a rainstorm, that certainly has to help. Anything else people can do to?
I think paying attention to plastics is really important. I learned this from Karen Buck, particularly talking about plastic. Because when people talk about plastic in the oceans, it gets there through the rivers. And so when you're thinking about your local river, that's how you can contribute to the planet's cleanup, is really paying attention to not using so many disposable things that are plastic, and watching them not go down the river. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Murphy.
Thank you, Madam President. Once again, echo, thank you so much for coming in. And I just want to say, this is such great news. We have been waiting for this news for years, that the Malden River is safe to boat on. And I think one of the things that really, you know, we need to drive home to people is the fact that in one of your earliest slides, you know, you showed that you took, took extreme measures to make sure that, how you gauge this, you over, you know, stated, any access, skin, contact, drinking, swimming, et cetera. I know we're not swimming, but, you know, person falling in off the boat, to the highest level possible. And nowhere in any of your categories did we not exceed the measures that the state and the feds had, it was state and the...
US EPA.
US EPA had put in place. I mean, so that is just, it's not like, oh, well, you know, we're a little short here, or we're a little short there. We got an A+. I mean, basically, we met all of the standards. And that, that is just such fabulous news. I think Karen Buck said it in the newspaper, now the real work begins. Because now we know we have a gem, and we need to do something with it. And I know that three years ago, when I established the Waterfront Access Committee, I did it because I was aggravated. I went and I bought a kayak. And I, and I brought it home. And then I couldn't find any place to put it in. So now we know that we, we can kayak on it, and I want to kayak on it, not just with a group, when a gate is open and I can get to it. But how do we as, how do we as a community, how do we as a council, how do we as a city, provide safe access to the river, so people can actually enjoy it on weekends, you know, during the summer, et cetera. So this is just, I agree with you, Karen, great statement. This is the beginning of a lot of hard work to come to make this a reality. So, thank you all. And we're looking forward to, I guess, the next presentation with Amber.
Right. Amber.
Yes.
Okay, well, I'm going back down.
If you need to come down, feel welcome.
Folks in the corner. All right. Not sure who to address here, you guys. All right. My name's Amber Christopherson. I know a few of you, which is great to be here, and thank you for inviting me to present. And again, a lot of this ties in with what Kathy was talking about, but I'm going to start with a little bit of a zooming out. So my role at the Mystic River Watershed Association is I'm the Greenway Director. And what we're working on is creating a connected network of parks and paths from the Mystic Lakes down to Boston Harbor. And these are a number of our active projects that we're working on. And we're working to find funding, to provide project management, planning, design support, community outreach, and partnering with all the different municipalities and state agencies along the way. So you can see, Malden River is here. Dots, not really representative, it's more of a segment here. And just a piece in the larger puzzle. So just to, again, zooming out, Malden River, it's, everyone knows Bike2Sea. If you think about the Malden River as not just a connector into Boston, it really connects up to the Minuteman and creates this interesting U-shape. So there's a lot of ways to place the Malden River in a regional context. And this is a map I recently put together, looking down at the confluence of the Mystic River here and the Malden River here, because there is so much going on here, as far as development, transportation. I think it might be the most significant development, really in the state, probably, when you're factory and the casino. So you're looking at more than 4,000 employees here. You have Partners, and Assembly Row is growing to about 5,000 employees. You have the Orange Line here, as you guys all know, with the Orange Line pressures. And so what this represents, these solid lines are existing paths, and the dotted lines are paths that are in progress. So as you can see, just in this area, it's starting to come together as a seamless network of paths. One thing that we know does not work is when you have a dead-end path. No one's going to go down that. There's no reason to go down. It doesn't connect anywhere. You don't get in your car thinking, I'm going to drive, and suddenly I can't drive anymore. And that's often the case for people that are on foot or on bike. So I'm going to go through a few of these projects as we go through this presentation. But just to say, like, as of right now, today, like, things are moving, pieces are under construction. So it's really an exciting time, and a great place to start a plan, when there's already some momentum and some development happening. So we started this Malden River Greenway Vision Plan in 2017. And this was the kind of org chart, you could say, of the plan itself. We served as a project manager, bringing in together the core stakeholders of Bike2Sea, Friends of the Malden River, Priata Lane and Associates funded, as well as WIN. We hired a consultant team of UTIL, who's an urban and design and planning firm, as well as Bishop Land Design. And then we had the Three Cities and the Solomon Foundation. So we had this interesting web of community groups, cities, and funders. So, you know, here's the good stuff. You have a lot of wildlife, rowing, River's Edge, the Malden has some beautiful spots, it has some not-so-beautiful spots. It looks like this is kind of bleeding off the sheet a little bit here. You know, not the best environmental situation, no public access, the water's draining straight from parking lots into the river, and then lots of fences. This is right in front of National Grid, and Medford Street's right here. So you have some public access, environmental, and frankly, just psychological barriers to understanding the river, because of the spotty access. So as we took on this plan, some of the opportunities were, should I make this like less bleed to, I'm not sure. Oh, that helps.
Just make sure, don't go any further.
Okay. Yeah, if we just do it a little bit more to the right, yeah. So when you look at the river and what's existing today, great potential connections to both downtown Malden and the Orange Line. And then, potential redevelopment opportunities for some of these sites that have been sitting there. And then when you look at the Northern Strand going up here, how can we better connect the river in that way? And then, across the river, there's been an idea of having a bridge here. I'll get to some of this in the plan. And then a lot of redevelopment opportunity, frankly, in the Wellington Tea Station. It's a sea of surface parking, which, as many of you've seen with Assembly Row developing, that's very valuable space. That could be a parking garage, it could be housing, it could be commercial spaces. So a lot of interesting things that can happen. And also, just to like, take a step back, you have the Orange Line running like this. You used to have a rail running like this. So you can see how the river was physically walled off from these neighborhoods. You can see the small footprints of residential development, and then big parcels and kind of blocked off. So that's just the history of the last 150 years of industrial development and these transportation corridors. And this is just a map of green solid is existing, red dotted is a gap, and then there's a, are there any green, yeah, like a green dotted means it's in progress. So just a slightly different version of the aerial that I showed you. And it's kind of interesting, too, because, yeah, as you mentioned, it's called the Malden River, but it has almost equal amounts of shoreline between Everett, Medford, and Malden. So throughout 2017, I think this was, we had a number of community meetings, charrettes, we did surveys to find out, what do people think about the Malden River, what do they want to see? And this was from one of our community events that we had at River's Edge in the boathouse. Here's some familiar faces. I think Ryan, you're right there. Yeah, it was just great to get folks just around a table, talking about problems that they see, opportunities that they see, and lots of notes and things that have been really valuable. So when we did our online survey, we had about 200 responses. And we asked a lot of questions that I'm not going to go through today. I'm just going to do two summary slides of, so this one was, when you think about the Malden River today, what words come to mind? You can see a little bit of green, that's beautiful, natural, peaceful. But then you have, half of this chart is a work in progress, underutilized, dirty, and then just hidden. I knew we had a lot of work to do, and some of the responses, we said, what do you think about the Malden River? And they said, there's a Malden River? I was like, okay. So, so we're starting at just raising awareness of where this is. And I can understand for folks that are from Malden, a lot of the Malden was buried underground. So part of it is gone, or gone underground, and not visible. And maybe it's just because, because it comes out just at the edge of Malden, it wasn't really on people's radar. So name a few things you dislike, and you would change about the Malden River. People always like these questions on surveys. Let me tell you what I don't like. So access and connectivity, don't know how to get there, if I do get there, the path dead ends, or I can't get across the road. There are still areas with an industrial wasteland feel, so cleanliness. And again, it's interesting, we talked about trash, because trash is a very visible environmental issue. I think it's easy for people to wrap their head around. And also, they can judge water quality because of trash, and say, it's not good water quality because there's a lot of trash. And they're actually not totally related. You can have good water quality and trash in the river. So it is important, as a low-hanging fruit, to hang, to deal with the trash issue. So, what are you most excited to see? Dedicated paths for walking and biking, new parks or open space, nature and wildlife. What are you least excited to see? Public parking, stores and restaurants, athletic fields. And I would say, like, with all of these surveys, every different sample size and period of time, you're going to get slightly different results. But what this tells me is that people really like the kind of natural and less programmed parts of the greenway that could be done. Maybe programming some of that stuff comes in later, but people just want the basics right now. It's like, we want to be able to walk along the whole river, I want to be in shade, I don't want to see trash. So I think that's a great place to start. So, you know, out of some of that outreach, what are the planning and design objectives? I won't go through all of these, but again, let's just get public accessibility. We want that biodiversity and healthy lifestyles. And again, thinking about the regional connections, that this river could connect people to jobs, as well as provide recreational value. So, there's three rough sections that the plan looked at. The first one is Malden Center to Little Creek. So I think that'll be what most folks here are most interested to hear about. This is really the Malden piece. This is a granite pier that, it's interesting that this is the photo, because this is where the granite pier used to be on combined properties. And they now have taken this path up and moved the granite pier. So that's, we can talk about that. But, yeah. And one, actually, you know, I'll finish at the end with that, because I was going to say, get into Chapter 91, but we'll leave that to the end. So existing connection, a big thing, right, is like, this doesn't look that big on the map, but it's a huge connection to make, because it's not straightforward right now, it's not a pleasant experience. It's hard for people to get just from Malden Center down to the top of the river. And there's no great entry points here, the best one's probably right here. So you kind of have to go down here and know what you're looking for. Let's see. And then the Commercial Street Quarter, again, this whole area here, there's not, no real lateral access in, unless you want to cross a parking lot, which most people don't like to, as a pedestrian or a bicyclist cross a parking lot. So these are, again, some of the images here. This now has been redeveloped, this is the new combined properties, 295 Canal Street. So there is a path here now, and this building has gone up in height. But you have some of these, there you go, dead end. This is in front of the Comcast building. So let's just think about how we connect these all together. So this is, these are some design ideas of what could be done. You know, working with the urban industrial nature of this area, we were proposing a more like urban canal style, less naturalized, more manicured, that kind of fits in with an urban context. Again, could something be done to follow where the river used to flow here? It's actually kind of partially above ground and partially below ground here. You know, obviously, you have the National Grid site, and that's an ongoing discussion of what's going to happen with that. But the broad context is, how do you make this connection here? There was an idea, you know, retrofitting better bike lanes and crosswalks and sidewalks across Medford Street. So this is a rendering of what it looks now. Again, just so much space right here. And then, this is what it could be. And again, this is not assuming any land use changes, which is not likely to happen. I think things will happen and redevelop, but that wasn't really in the scope of our plan. Our plan was to look at, how do you provide that 30-foot setback from the river with good walking and biking trails and green space? And then, here you go with the Malden Center in the background. And then as we, we're going to travel down the river with this plan. And so this is the National Grid site, which is a half-mile shoreline. I'm sure many of you are familiar with the ongoing Chapter 91. I was going to use the word battle, I'd be strong. But it did start in 2016, so it's been a long, a long time coming. Chapter 91 is a public trust doctrine that is regulated by the state through DEP, saying that if any site is on a formerly filled tideland area, you have to provide access to that waterfront, to the Commonwealth, to the people. And so, National Grid proposed a 100-foot path right here as their public access. And we said, no, the whole thing, so that it connects to the next piece, as all the sites keep developing. So for the last few years, we've been in an ongoing written determination and now appeal process through the state. The great news is that we have a really strong coalition of Everett, Medford, and Malden, which the site is on all three cities, because the river used to curve. So Everett and Medford are on different sides of the river. So those three entities, Friends of the Malden River, our organization, countless state reps and senators, are all on the same side, really kind of against National Grid. So it's just a matter of time and putting political pressure on. But this was, in this plan, we did a very high-level concept design of how this path could go through the site. You need a couple structures, like boardwalks and retaining walls, but can be done. And so, to give you guys an update on where we are with that now, August of last year, DEP issued a written determination, said you have to build this path, has to be 10 feet wide, has to be done in the next two years. And then DEP appealed it, and then we appealed their appeal. And by we, I mean Conservation Law Foundation, our organization in the three cities. The latest thing that National Grid has committed to do, and it's, I'm not entirely sure what's public and private, but they have agreed to put aside some amount of money to delve into this plan, to understand what the path would cost. Because that's really a significant piece of information that we don't know, is, is this a million-dollar project? Is it a $6 million project? It's kind of like in the range that we're in. So we're working towards a negotiation, and it's in the Office of Administration and Dispute Resolution with DEP in kind of a legal-like fashion, where there's lots of briefs and motions going back and forth. So I won't bore everyone with those details. But the good news is, I think the pressure is working, and the state actually, the Commissioner, Marty Seuberg, came to our final... Marty Seuberg, came to our final public meeting for this project, and I think realized the significance of the Malden River and the momentum behind it and the importance of connecting all of these sites to create a seamless network. So, that's been positive. And then, as we keep going down, this is where you have River's Edge, a little bit more of a wider natural feel of the river. There's a little island right here. If any of you guys have ever seen it, if you get in your boat, you can go visit the island. And then, River Green is a 40-acre site that, I think it's the next slide. Oh, it's the Wellington Connector. I'll do this one real quick, and then we'll go to the River Green site. And then, tell me where I am on time. Do I have, like, five minutes? I feel like I'm longer. Do I just want to do a little time check? Okay. All right, cool. I like to respect people's time, so just flag me down if you need me to stop. Great. Yeah, it's perfect. So, this, again, orange line, and then this is a spur that is owned by Pan Am and a remnant of the 1800s railroad system that came through here. So, you can see it right here. The interesting thing is, right here, this is what we're calling a land bridge, and the orange line goes under and comes back up. So, there's an opportunity that you could cross here and get on this track and turn it into a linear park that connects this whole side of Medford and Malden over here to the river side.
Highland Ave.
To Highland Ave. What was that? Is this Highland Ave?
Highland Ave's Fells Way.
Oh, this is the Fells Way. Is this Highland Ave?
Yeah, it's Highland Ave.
Okay. So, what's interesting to note is, this is Medford Street. This is Route 16. There is literally no crossing that someone could make going this direction. So, in addition to this link, sir-- connecting people over here to the river, it actually can connect people down into Wellington T Station without having to go through Wellington Circle, which, if I lived here and had to go through Wellington Circle, I would want. I just crossed there on my bike the other day through, like, a 10-phase crossing. Anyway, so, really interesting idea here. The T has approved having public access along this land bridge, and then said, "But Pan Am owns the rest of that, so, like, good luck working with Pan Am." And that's kind of where we are, and waiting a little bit for some capacity within the city of Medford, because we really need, like, a staff person to be working with Pan Am and being-- pushing that forward. So, you know, we have some preliminary planning pieces that would be needed to move this forward, but just haven't had the capacity, the funding, to take that on yet. But, a pretty compelling idea. So, these are some of the images of, you can go out and walk it today. Like, there's-- there's no real fences or anything. But, yeah, so. And this is just more of like a rendering, showing how you could have some trees and a path. So, this is the River Green site. Has anyone seen what this site has looked like in the last, like, four months? If you go down, this is the Northern Strand right here, and then, like, night shift is down here, and the Northern Strand ends here. It's pretty amazing. There's now a whole river walk like this, and this whole site is-- here's the plan. So, this is the Northern Strand. This is a half a mile. I just took this last week. This is the new public pavilion that's right here overlooking the water. And this was a groundbreaking that Everett had last year for this park that's going in right here. There's going to be some fields, some play equipment, and this is turning into a really nice park. Speaking of boating, this is also as of today. So, this right here is an MWRA easement. If you go out on site, it's like a gravel walkway, about like this wide. And Everett is putting in a boat launch right here. An MWRA signed off on them using the easement, and it's already kind of graded so that you can get in and out. And they just signed a design contract with Weston Sampson to design a boat launch there. So, that's pretty cool. That's going to happen and be there. Oh, is that what you were going to tell me about? Yeah, I just talked to Tom. So, yeah, yeah. And it's going to be, when we say boat ramp, that can mean a lot of things. You could have a boat ramp that's like a concrete, like, you know, diagonal loading area where you're backing cars, and it won't be like that. It's more of a low-key, almost like dock system, where you could park here and then just carry your boat out to here. And then, they're also looking at doing some selective clearings, because one thing is, like, the fragmities and some of the invasive species have really taken off here. So, that's going to be an ongoing battle for all of us to take on. It's a little bit hard to see here, but this is an image of looking down the Malden River, similar to that aerial that I started with. There's the Tobin Bridge downtown Boston and a rendering of kind of what this space could be. This bridge right here was designed, actually, as a vehicular bridge, about 20 years ago as part of Telecom City that was supposed to be here, and we have it envisioned as a pedestrian bridge that connects Everett to Medford and also provides Everett residents with access to the orange line, because right now Everett has no fixed rail in their city. They just have buses. So, the more that they can get access to the T, the better. This, the design of this bridge doesn't really reflect this. This was just sort of a placeholder, but there was an interesting idea during the planning process around rowing, and if you have a bridge going over, it's a great place to watch rowing from, kind of like the Charles River or that pedestrian bridge that's by Harvard. And it was like, oh, yeah, it's not just transportation, but it could be a really interesting place-making and recreational amenity. So, this was a-- I'm not sure if I'll talk too much about the river basin, but when you look down here, one interesting thing to note is that this is called the Wellington Greenway and ends right here, and then you're kind of just dumped off in the parking lot. The number of tours I've had to lead through there amongst cars is like, stress-inducing, but this segment here, that's about a third of a mile, is designed and permitted, and John Priato is leading that process, and that'll connect up to a brand-new underpass that's here and on that side. So, now we're getting more connectivity here. These paths all exist, and then the casino just built the connector that's going to allow you to get from here to the casino, and then there's the planned pedestrian bridge here. So, this was from a sidewalk I did last week. This is the last remaining industrial parcel in Everett between the BNY Park and River Green. So, we were meeting with the property owner, talking about redeveloping the site, putting a path. Again, this is like the last piece in Everett, so it's pretty exciting, but pretty challenged environmentally and sort of industri-- there's a lot of industry there, but because the site over to the left and to the right are all redeveloping and have these great spaces, it makes it a lot easier to do that last piece. This is an image of the new bike and pedestrian underpass at the Woods Memorial Bridge, again, on both sides. And then, when you cross over, this is what you're looking at, where this is the widest part of the Malden River. It's really quite beautiful when you're down there and feels nothing like the part of the river that's up here. So, again, if you can boat along that length, I think it's really, really an impressive cross-section. Again, boating, this was just, we did a boat plan of where you could put different launches. And just to share, since I'm in Malden here, there was an idea thrown out of, what if Anthony's turned into a place where you could store boats? And it actually became like a boat club, where you could keep your boat there and then launch it from there and then have dinner alongside the river. So, some of these ideas, you know, I think we all live in-- this is a pretty urban area, so not everyone can store a boat in their yard. So, it's something to think about. And the guy that runs Paddle Boston's on our board, I know he's thinking about these things, too, because he's trying to make boating more accessible to everyone. So, this is the website where the whole plan lives, so you can go check it out. I'm not doing updates to it every day, so it's pretty, it's just kind of like shared information that's there. But here are some next steps, and this is where I thought we could focus some of the conversation. So, we just look at Area 1, which is the top of the Malden, again, pretty much the Malden piece. Chapter 91 is the main regulatory tool that mandates that developers build a path along the shoreline. As we all know, it doesn't mandate quality, really, or any kind of aesthetic concerns. It's just the bare minimum, but advocacy around Chapter 91 is usually pretty effective. And if the state is hearing from local constituents in the cities that they want more, we're getting pretty experienced at fighting Chapter 91 licenses. So, you know, I think it's something that, there's opportunity. The other thing is, if someone wanted to take this on, we have a volunteer who's a Chapter 91 expert that works for-- volunteers for our organization. And we just found out that, I don't know if you guys know this, but before 1984, that's when Chapter 91 went into, became law, any, any building that hasn't updated their property since 1984 is grandfathered in, so they're not subject to Chapter 91 unless they had a major modification to their property. However, we just found out that most landowners should have filled out an exemption form, and if they didn't, there could be like a loophole in this whole grandfathered situation. I haven't had the bandwidth to, like, look into that, but if someone, if someone wanted to take that on, we could have our expert kind of look into that. He seems to love going to DEP and, like, digging through their files, so it's fun for him. He's a lawyer. I don't know. But, yeah, and then there's been talk about design standards or zoning that's related to the Malden River in Malden. And then, the DPW site, big opportunity, as that is owned by the MRA and could be redeveloped and, including a much upgraded boating facility that is not up to, I don't think, anyone's standards of what we'd want. So, yeah. And then, you know, the rest are just kind of getting into other things that are outside Malden, so I'll leave it there. Turns out, I could, like, just talk about this forever. It's also, you know, it's, I put, this plan was really put together at the end of 2017, so it's pretty amazing to see what has changed in the real world since then. Like, I look at some of these images, I'm like, that's a new building. There's a new path. So, it's pretty exciting that changes are actually happening, even when it feels like sometimes it's a very slow process.
Counselor O'Malley.
Thank you. I promise I'll be brief. Yeah, I think it's, I want to thank the Mystic River Watershed Association. I think this Greenway vision plan was kind of the catalyst to kind of people, get people's creative juices flowing of what's possible. I think also, River's Edge kind of did that to a large degree, but as we know, River's Edge, aside from the toughs boathouse launch, is very separated from the river and kind of opening up our minds of how we're going to connect to the river. Now that we have the public health risk assessment, we know it's safe to get down to the river and boat and launch. We know in Everett now that there is a boat launch, so there's, and we have one here in Malden. It's just the access, as Counselor Murphy stated, is, is not quite there yet, and that's one of the reasons why you founded the Waterfront Access Subcommittee so many years ago. So, I think we're in a unique opportunity now to really kind of tout the powers of Chapter 91, which guarantees the public right to access our public waterways. And as you stated, we've recently changed the zoning down by the river to encourage more commercial and more development down there, like hotels. And if you see some of these parcels that are largely parking lots turn over, if we have minimum design standards built into our zoning, it can kind of go on top of Chapter 91 to make sure that we're getting high-quality public access as well as high-quality developments next to the river. So, thank you again for, for all of this, and I'm looking forward to the next years ahead.
Thank you. Counselor Winslow.
Yeah, no, I just want to thank the Watershed Council and the Friends of Malden River to really taking this whole thing to the next level and making these connections start to happen. And I also want to, you know, chime in with Counselor O'Malley, that we, as a council and as a city, should be taking some steps to develop those zoning and design standards so that the Malden stretch of the Malden River is meeting the same high-quality standards that are happening in Everett and, and Medford. I think that's one of the kind of disappointments. I know people with the Friends of the Malden River that we see what's happened along our stretch, and it's just not meeting those same standards. So, I mean, that's part because we have not taken the actions as a city to make sure that happens. Chapter 91 is a minimum thing. We can set higher standards, so that's one of the things we should work on to make sure that Malden residents have the same quality of pathways as we're seeing in the other communities. Thank you so much. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Murphy.
Thank you, Madam President. Amber, Karen, Hugh, Kathy, I just want to really thank you for taking the time out of your personal lives to come in and explain all of this to us. And to the audience, MATV will be rebroadcasting this over and over, and it's amazing. As I walk through the streets, people will say, "Oh, I saw this on TV." It is a show that is watched. The council meetings are watched, and I'm sure that, you know, the, the information that you've provided today is not only helpful to us, but is helpful to all of the residents, you know, within the city of Malden who'll be hearing about this. So, thank you for all your hard work, your dedication, for coming in to see us tonight, and continue the good work, because you really are doing a wonderful job for, for the community, not just Malden, but Malden, Medford, Everett, our community as, as a group. So, thank you so much.
Counselor Matheson.
Thank you, Chair. And I didn't want to miss the opportunity to thank you for an enlightening presentation and thank the Friends of Malden River and the Mystic River Watershed Association. I think this is very educational for all of us, and I'm very optimistic about the future. Thank you again.
Thank you. Thank you for coming, all of you. It was a, I look forward to being able to kayak and possibly paddleboat down the Malden River. It's not swimming. I don't know if I, we'll see. I'm not quite sure I'd be able to wrap my head around that one yet, but on a paddleboard or a kayak, my family enjoys doing that, so I look forward to being able to do that right in, in, in Malden. So, thank you all for coming. Next order of business?
Presentation by Ron Hogan, Stephen O'Neill, Jan Lip on the proposed five-year water main replacement program.
The mayor has kept me and Counselor Kamel in the loop on his intent to send down a bonding authorization related to continued water main work. It is an important topic and one of great interest to the public. One thing that I've found works well for us as a city council is for us to get information and be able to absorb it prior to the actual request coming down. In that spirit, and given the fact that several councillors weren't here the last time we began a water main replacement project, I asked the mayor if he could come, have some city staff members provide us with an overview of this topic and a proposal. I would expect that we'd follow up with a deeper look at the financials related to this proposal at a finance meeting. So, with that, Ron Hogan will walk us through some background information that I hope we find helpful in anticipation of this bonding request. Ron Hogan.
So, I guess the first thing we should mention, the Bruins are winning 2-0. Right, JD? Is that the most recent update?
Yes. Sorry.
They won, the last game was 2-0. Excuse me. This game hasn't started yet. JD was texting me. So, so, all joking aside, I think one of the things we thought, for some of the last few more complicated topics that we've had before the council, that's been helpful, is to come before you, give you some information, to give you an opportunity to, to both absorb it and ask questions before we actually come down before you with a request for a bonding authorization. So, it's really in that spirit that I'm here tonight is to, is to get you thinking about a topic that really hasn't been talked about in a few years. I think some folks might not have been on the council the last time that the, the sort of big water main project across the city, you know, actually had, had started. So, so hopefully, you know, you find it informative and it lays the groundwork, as I mentioned, for, for a bonding authorization. You know, the, I guess the, you know, for those of you that might be following, following along at home, we will take this presentation and put it up on the engineering page tomorrow. And if anybody here wants a hard copy, Yem's got one if you happen to want to follow along. But just to kind of take a step back and look at the, the water distribution system across the city, consists of about 126 miles of water mains that started being installed in the city back in the 1890s, when the city was really first largely laid out with, with central water distribution. And that continued through the 1930s using a material called online cast iron. You know, generally, the mains are what goes down the, the street and, and provides an opportunity then to deliver what we call services, right, to all the residents and businesses and what have you, and the combination of the main and the service makes up our water distribution system. Our, our mains right now generally range from four inches to 16 inches, but both are in, most are in the, the eight-to-12-inch category. And since that initial system was installed way back when, only about 25% of the city has been upgraded. So, where we find ourselves in a situation that a lot of cities find themselves in, which is with an infrastructure that we got a lot of time out of, and now we have a lot of catching up to do to go ahead and bring it up to date. If you go to the next slide, it takes and really breaks down the city into age groups. And you can see that we still have almost 30 miles of mains that are over, over 100 years old. And, and if you look on the right-hand side, there's the And, and if you look on the right-hand side, there's, the material generally didn't change to a material called ductile iron until, you know, within the last 25 to 50 years. Up till then, we were using this online cast, and we, when we, when you see the next slide, you'll see why that material's become a problem over time. The, the main problem with that online cast that's sitting on the streets right now is over time, they, they build up, they build up material on the inside of them, and it actually restricts the flow coming through the pipe. And we actually, I brought one. Some of you won't be able to see this too far, but this is an actual sample of what happens with the pipe over time. This is a, this is a cast iron main that, that you can see. That's all built up. Yeah. My adder is and yours, Counsel. But that's what happens over time is, is you get these growth, which is called tuberculation on the inside of the pipe. And, and what that does is several things. One is, of course, it restricts the flow, right? I mean, that's a given when you look at it, so that restricts the flow both for homeowners, but also for firefighting, quite frankly, right? And a lot of these mains that are out there are undersized to start with by today's standards, and when you take them, and that type of thing happens over time, the undersizing becomes even a bigger problem. It also becomes prone to leaks, and so what ends up happening is we end up with a lot of unaccounted-for water, where we are paying the MWRA for water that never makes its way through a meter, and so therefore, you know, we're essentially just literally pouring money into the ground. So that, that's the, I guess the last thing I should mention is, with the restricted flow, what can happen is pockets of bacteria can form on the inside of that pipe, you know, more so than they can on a smooth pipe, and as the, as the flow of water gets restricted, the temperature of the water can rise to a point that the, that the water temperature sort of overwhelms the, the chlorine that's built into the water to prevent that from happening, and, and that's when you can end up in a situation where the drinking water becomes unsafe. So there's a lot of bad things that happen when you end up restricting the flow of water. So if we go to the next slide, we just give you sort of a, a bit of a technical definition of tuberculation, but it's, it's what you see there in front of you, right? Your eyes tell you more about it than any description ever could. It's, it's, it's bad at a byproduct of, of the material that was used across all cities, not just Malden, up until, in some cases, in the 70s. So if you, if you look at the next slide, what we've been using for the last, you know, 30-plus years, I would say, Steve, is that, you know, maybe even a little bit longer, is a, a new product that's called ductile iron, right? And so this is what has been installed in the city as we've been upgrading. Anything that's been changed has been changed to this. It's a product where they line the inside of that cast iron pipe with the, with the cement product, and that cement product prevents to, for the, for the most part, it prevents the ability of that type of formation happening on the inside of the pipe. So it's a, it's a new and improved way to do this. I'm sure when we're sitting here, 70, whoever's here, 75 years from now, they'll have something new, but, but right now, it's the sort of tried and true method, and that's the, that's the product that when we go ahead and replace water mains, we look to replace it with. So of course, the other thing that happens when you replace a water main is you replace the service lines at the same time, and all these water mains that we're going to be talking about are of an age where we can safely assume the service lines coming off all of them are lead. So at the same time that we're solving the issue with upgrading a water main, we're solving the issue of, of upgrading the, the service lines coming off of them. And what you're going to see in the proposal is, of all the mains being proposed to be replaced, is over 300 lead service lines, again, likely to be lead. It would be very unusual for us to have gone in and replaced a service line without having done anything about the main. So we are making the assumption that, that just about all of them are lead service lines. So of course, the issue every municipality finds himself with is just the staggering cost of doing this. It is something that the American Society of Civil Engineers looked at a study in 2017 and threw a number statewide at it, which is probably understated. I think Steve O'Neill and Yem, the two engineers behind me, would tell you the same thing, but even they threw a number statewide of over $12 billion to, to deal with the issue with, you know, with aging water infrastructure. And every single year, it only gets worse, right? So it's a, it's a bit of a staggering number, but the only way to go about it is by doing what we've been doing, which is to continue to try to make some progress each and every year. But, but of course, I, I think we know from the last time we did this, you know, the challenge is when you rip up the pipe, it means you've also ripped up the street, because you're, you're ripping up the main and you're ripping up all of the service lines going to the left and to the right of it and across the sidewalk, and it's not the type of thing that tends to be able to be patched. And so the process of ripping up that main generally also involves the process of putting that street back together. You know, what was interesting is I, when we took a look at the total cost involved in the streets, streets being proposed here, and I broke it down on a per-household level, it's staggering to think that it comes to about $50,000 per household service when you take all the costs involved in replacing the main and putting the street back together. 300 services, you're going to hear me later mention a number of $15 million, which is the estimate right now, comes down to $50,000 per household service, right? So the reality is getting safe and clean water to somebody's front door has gotten a lot more expensive than the first time the system was installed way back when. So just to, and again, I, I think the intent here tonight is to lay some groundwork for, I'm sure it'll be a vibrant discussion in finance about some, some more of the numbers, but the, the budgets that have been developed have been developed using some, some, some standard numbers that get used on a per linear foot basis, which is about $335 a linear foot for the water main part of the project, and about $400 a linear foot to go ahead and put the, put the road back together afterwards. And so when you, when you add in soft costs and some contingency money based just upon what you would typically carry in a project like this, you know, you quickly get up north of $900 a linear foot to go ahead and do this type of work. So we're proposing a, a project that costs for the replacement of 13,000 feet of water mains over the next five years, again, at an estimated cost of about $15 million. And again, I'm sure that the part of this that would be talked about in quite a bit of detail at the, at the finance committee meeting will be, you know, sort of the funding sources, but what the mayor's going to propose is that about six and a half, $6.6 million of it come through an MWRA local assistance bond that they, a program they now have available that allows you to borrow the money at no interest. About $6.3 million of it using some reserves in the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund, and a little typo in the end, I'm always thinking about the schools, so I put some of it coming from Chapter 70. Don't panic, schools, it's not Chapter 70, but it's Chapter, Chapter 90. And so when you do these type of projects, you, you have to fund the portion of the road work that is not related to the water work out of another source, and so that's, that's the piece that's proposed to be funded out of Chapter 90. So give you just a, a little bit more of a breakdown of the, the year-by-year on the next slide, and again, I won't go into intimate detail. The idea here was to give you some things to see and to, to think about before that finance meeting, but it shows you the year-by-year breakdown. And perhaps even more importantly for you all, on the next slide, and the last slide is the street-by-street breakdown that shows you the streets and the ward and the, the targeted year that it's intended to be done. Now, the, the way these streets were picked is certainly something that I think if anyone's got any specific questions here or at finance, Steve O'Neill or Yem Lip could speak to the aspect of this. Some of these were designed by CDM, and then no further work was done back when they were still working with the city, and other ones to deal, to deal with some specific problems that are existing in some areas with, you know, with water flow. So there's, there's logic behind all of them, I'm not going to pretend to be the expert on that, but they, they put together this plan to try to address sort of a, a potpourri of challenges, recognizing again that we have 30 miles that you could have chosen from, so in some ways, there's no right answer and there's no wrong answer. So, that's sort of what I wanted to cover again, is to hope they give you some, some groundwork about what's coming down to finance. I think the next thing would be that bonding paper. Be happy to take any questions about the topic itself, if that helps or anything, quite frankly, and, and if not, then hopefully by having this and some chance to review it beforehand, it's a productive meeting when it happens at finance.
Thank you, Mr. Hogan. Counselor Winslow.
You know, I wasn't on the council at the time this last came up, but my understanding was that the last set of bonding related to this was $50 million, not 15. So I, I'm, I'm, I'm glad, you know, we're looking at a five-year plan and that type of thing. I mean, just looking at this initial thing, we're only doing 1% of the pipes that are over 75 years old. It'll take us 100 years to replace the pipes that are over 75 years old. My question is, are we really being bold enough here that if in fact we spent $50 million last time, why are we only looking at 15 million this time? So, so that's kind of my question. I mean, I don't know if we're, you know, calling on ourselves to invest enough money in our cities to really even make a, a, a good stab. I mean, we're, if we're only doing 1% a year of our pipes that are older than 75 years, I mean, we're, in 50 years, we're going to have pipes that are 175 years old. So, so that's kind of my question, and I appreciate that we are having this discussion, and this is, you know, we're laying out a five-year plan. My question is, is whether we're really going to invest enough. I, I just, I can't see us, you know, going forward with this, there was just not a lot of money. I mean, I know it's expensive, but I think we also have to be realistic to our, our residents to say, you know, this is, may not be enough money to really maintain an infrastructure even at a basic level. I just can't imagine working on a plan that is going to, and, and us having most of our pipes being 175 years old. I don't know, even know if that's realistic. So, so that's, that's my question. I mean, I, I really appreciate the effort that's gone into this, that we are having a five-year plan, we're having this discussion, but I mean, my understanding was that last time you spent $50 million, why are we only spending 15? So, so that's my question, so, so, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think Counselor, it's a, it's a point well made. I think, you know, we talked about it the other day with Steve and Yem, and, and the fact is that even at this rate and this expenditure, you are, you continue to fall behind, and yet I think everybody tries to figure out the right balancing act between, you know, sort of the cost of this and, and the impact that it has on ratepayers and trying to figure out how much of that, you know, folks are comfortable with. But you're 100% correct. In a lot of ways, even with this investment, you're still falling further and further behind. I mean, if you just look at 126 miles of main, I mean, you assume aggressively that there's 100 years of life in a, in a new main, you know, you, you ought to be doing something in the neighborhood of 1.3 miles a year just to keep up, and, and this doesn't even get you to that, you know? And so, it's, hopefully it'll be part of the dialogue is to see, you know, if it's not aggressive enough, but it's a, you know, a starting point for the discussion, I hope.
You all said Counselor Winslow?
Yeah, I'm all set.
Okay. Counselor Matheson.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Mr. Hogan. You mentioned the reduced water flow in the black hydrants. Do we have an updated list on how many black hydrants there are out there? Because that was a concern of ours years ago, that the fire department could tap into a hydrant that had insufficient flow because of a tuberculated pipe, and then they wouldn't be able to use that hydrant to suppress a fire. Do we have a updated list of that? I think that should come along with this paper, so we can see if we're tackling that issue as well.
It's arranged between 75 and 80 of black hydrants.
Okay. All right. And is that, is that something you can provide with the next finance paper so that we could take a look at that contemporaneously?
Yes.
Thank you. The $6.6 million MWRA zero-interest bond, I like zero-interest, I'll say that. Is this SRF, State Revolving Fund loans?
I don't know if it's the same exact program. I mean, Steve, it's got no debt, it's got no forgiveness, it's just got the 0%, is that correct? Yeah. So, doesn't have the debt forgiveness that some of the SRF loans had that we had done, I think, initially.
So in light of that, is there a cap on how much we can borrow on an annual basis? Steve, is there?
The city has, I believe, an order of $15 million aggregate available to it under the sample of the R.
All right, I'll just repeat that for the people at home, there's $15 million in the aggregate that we can carry as a community in Massachusetts. Is that right? Not that we're carrying it now, but that is the maximum we can hold at any given time of, of MWRA bonds?
Yes, that is, under, under this MWRA program, the city is entitled to, it's in the order of a million dollars a year over the life of the MWRA program. And looking out, it, it appears right now that the city would be eligible for in the order of $15 million in borrowing through this program.
Okay, we don't have any currently outstanding debt on that program?
Um, I believe that...
If you don't have the answer, that's okay, I'm not trying to trick you, I just, something I'm going to wonder when this finance paper comes down, it's $15 million we've got to talk about.
Okay.
So the Chapter 90 funds, not 70, 90, 2.3, that's about 50%. Is that staged over five years? That's about 50% of the Chapter 90 funds?
Yes.
All right. Last question. I was here for the last tranche of roads. These are all 100-year-old pipes, I assume, because that seems to dominate the conversation, 100-year-old pipes plus. All of these qualify as in that category? Okay. And if CDM Smith had done the, the prior survey and design, that means that that was part of the, the phase that we canceled because we needed to clawback some funds to finish the other, I believe, five phases, right? So that canceled Phase 6 is within these roads, is that right?
Yes, I think the work that they did was, was more limited than what, than full survey and design. I mean, Steve, they had done a water work, some waterwork design. Yeah, so it's, it's more of a, sort of a water plan than the survey design that we end up talking about when we get into the railroad-type stuff. So it's, there isn't a tremendous amount of saving there, but what it allowed Hannah Swanson to do is to start from using their research to try to hone in on a starting point for streets without having to start from scratch.
Right. And I remember early in the last water pipe main replacement program, we hadn't properly budgeted for survey, design, and detail. I think we've corrected that issue, that's all contemplated in this budget.
Yeah, so that $400 a linear foot plus the 20% soft costs is intended to cover all that, but of course, you find out when you go out to bid, you know, one street's more expensive than the other, you hope that it all averages out to that, but we think it's a healthy figure to carry at this point, absolutely.
Okay. Good job, Mr. Hogan.
Thank you.
Counselor Crowe.
Thank you, Madam President. Actually, I would like to sort of understand sort of why these streets, I understand it, but the CDM did some of the things, but, you know, usually if a resident sort of asks is kind of like some sort of almost algorithm between the age of the, the pipe and the, because there's not one wood, one street on here. So when I have to explain that if this is where we stop, that we won't be getting the street done for five years, not going to go over so well. So I'd like to at least understand.
Yeah, so, so let me ask Steve if, yeah, I mean, Steve's certainly more qualified than I to speak to the work they had done to get to this group of streets, so let me just step...
Sure. We, we, basically what we did is we looked at really what CDM had done previously, recognizing that probably three-quarters of the streets that are in this five-year plan were streets that had been identified previously through studies by others, and it would probably go back to even when I was working in the city system back in the 90s, where, where we did all sorts of studies on the city's distribution system. And, and the, the central theme keeps coming back to looking to replace the older online cast iron pipes that are typically even smaller than the standard eight-inch pipe. A lot of these pipes that are being proposed are six-inch diameter pipes, so that's the underlying theme, and, and there's, you know, there's miles and miles and miles of other pipes that could be equally eligible. So really, it had to do with trying to take advantage of the work that had been done by others in their study and developing a program, because these streets, three-quarters of these, were programmed, but as Counselor Matheson indicated, you know, I don't know for fact, but I surmise that they were removed from the program because of lack of funding and tried to control the expense of the prior program. So that was really the launch point for, for this. Then the other streets that were, were filled in in the back end of this five-year plan were streets that, again, fit that criteria, where it's older online cast iron, where they have been reported deficiencies, whether it's in water pressure being delivered to the residents. For example, the neighborhood up off of, up at Highland Ave, Blomar Street, Grimshaw, that's in an area where there, there's pressure, has been reported pressure problems. That introduces issues with, you know, low pressure for domestic consumption as well as, you know, concern for fire flows. So it was using that type of, of criteria. And then of course, you know, to Counselor Winslow's point, funds permitting, I, I think it would be wise for the city to be more robust in their investment in the system, but there's plenty of street, streets that need to be done, and I would suggest, you know, saying that this is a five-year plan. If the city saw fit to increase funding to make this a more robust program, I think the city has to be mindful that it doesn't stop after five years. This, this should be a continuous investment in the city system that once it gets going, it should continue, because you do want to be on a, really on a 100-year replacement cycle, and, and it will be very challenging to catch up so that you then can... And, and it will be very challenging to catch up, so that you then can go with that 1.2 miles a year to keep up. So it's, it's a, it, it's a daunting challenge ahead for the city, in, in trying to balance the need, what streets are right. Like I say, you could, you could put probably 100 streets in a bowl and pull a, pull his name out, and that would be equally deserving as, as a street that's on the current list.
But not in one. Anyway, just my point. The, actually, I would like to see, you know, I know if we, if, although this might be what's proposed, if we can see what like a catalog version might be, not every street, but, so at least that we have something we can say, well, we can kind of go to this, because I do think this will be a robust conversation in finance. But I think having some, you know, where you're proposing and, you know, what might we do, or what might some other money get us.
Yeah, fair enough. We can maybe, and again, this is why I think this conversation's helpful before the finance meeting, is because there's questions that, that come up, that's information that can be gathered and put together. So when we do sit down in, in a committee meeting, we're not starting from scratch with that. So I think that's a reasonable thing. And again, keep in mind, at, again, a mile, 1.2 miles a year, if you just use a $900 a linear foot mile, right, you know, you're, you're talking about well over $5 million bucks a year in investment, just to make sure you're not falling behind. I mean, it is, it is daunting. And that's if we were starting now, not being behind. So I think, you know, Counselor Winslow, your point is well made, which is to, combined with, I think, your point, Counselor Crowe, maybe you put together an alternative B, which adds into it a more aggressive approach, and together have a conversation about what the appetite is for that, and the impact of, you know, on water rates. That's obviously a part of the dialogue, so.
Right. Well, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Condon.
Thank you, Madam President. Ron, I think one thing that can't happen is what happened the last time. It's great to open up all these streets and do all this construction, but when the streets get opened up that way, and they were opened up, as you know, seven, eight years before they were finally done. 2012, I had one street get finally finished in 2019. We have to have a plan and a goal. When we dig them, when are they going to be completed? Because it was really amazing how much the residents put up with. So, when you say we should spend a lot more money, maybe over the course of time, but you can't put yourself in a situation where you go in there, open everything up, and then, whoa, we got to wait six years to close them up? I don't think so, you know? But I'm sure we have to develop some sort of a plan. Also, we got to remember that we have to coordinate with National Grid on the gas lines, because we can't open up these streets, replace the water lines, and a year later, National Grid comes in and says, oh, we've got to replace the gas line. Once we open them up, we got to coordinate that stuff, which we did a great job with on the last part of that project, on the teal end of that. National Grid was terrific, as I remember.
And certainly every street on here, Counsel, that's being proposed, the engineers have, you know, sort of a 30-column spreadsheet that goes through every other variable that should be looked at, including the age of the gas main and, and whether or not that should be replaced. But I, you know, I, I think your point is well made about, it's not just money, it's also capacity, both for us and the contractors, to be able to do, you know, more at the same time, right? Because there's a limited number of folks out there that we, that tend to bid on these things with us. And when we stretch them, even though they feel good about taking on the work, I think you see what happened last time, which is, didn't matter how much money we had, it, it, you know, we fell behind. So I think that, that needs to be part of the dialogue.
I think you, you have to work at that we're hitting each construction season, spring and fall. And I think we'll be a lot more successful this time when we do this. So I'm looking forward to hopefully being part of this discussions again. We forget, we don't, we don't have new schools out there anymore. Those schools are 30 years old. So before you know it, now they're older schools. You know, it's hard to...
We do new at the small end now. It's no more capital, we just do the small.
Right, exactly. So, I think we have to look at how much debt we're going to retire during this five years, how it's going to affect the budget. One thing I, I would ask on the spreadsheet, on these streets that we're doing, could you put the year that the water lines were replaced, so we can see it?
Absolutely, yeah.
At least we'll know that, you know, I'm sure most of my early 1900s are late 1800s. So I'd appreciate that, if you could do that.
No problem.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Di Maria.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to the team. Thank you, Ron Hogan, for presenting great presentation. This is my second time around with all this, and I really do agree with my fellow counselors. We need one plan, one timeline, instead of coming back and going by Ward and then going by this. It should be prioritized by the age of these pipes, and, you know, safety for our residents, safety for drinking water. And, I mean, we should just have one plan and a timeline and, and just stay with it. So I think it's kind of like, it's kind of, we show, you know, we go by Ward and then we show favoritisms here. And, you know, it's got to be priority, the age, the safety of these pipes. So I do look forward to, I have so many more questions, but I'm going to reserve it for finance, and I look forward to that. But if you could think about that maybe as an addendum to your next presentation, just give us a list of all the roads that need to be done in pri, not just these roads, just give us, give it all to us and say, these are our oldest roads, and, you know, and go from there.
So, and, and that makes sense. I think sometimes we tend to oversimplify it just by talking about age, and, and, you know, these gentlemen behind me can speak to it a lot better than I can. But there's other factors that come into my, that come into play. There's some pipes down at Ward 7 that might not be as old as the oldest pipe in the city, but they have flow issues that are causing challenges, that have them leapfrog over, you know, another street that may be older, but due to where it sits within the system, and whether or not it's at the end of the run, and, you know, the, the function of the gate valve leading up to it, there's, so there are other variables that, you know, which is why, to some degree, the, the folks who have the expertise put all that together and try to figure it all out. And then we sometimes bring it back to, well, isn't it just a matter of putting the age on the pipe and sorting it by age? And the answer is not always, right? So it's a starting point, and it, generally speaking, you'd think we're hitting the older first, but it's not just as simple as sorting it off of the date that it was installed, because there's, there's more to it than that. And I think that's, but what hopefully will come through in the dialogue in the committee.
I do think it's a good starting point. And then if something does jump to up the list, then I can understand that, because I was aware of that in Ward 7 last year.
Yep.
But I do think it's a good starting point. So, thank you, Mr. Hogan.
Thank you. Counselor O'Malley.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to apologize for the number of questions I'm going to have ahead of time.
I'm sorry, apologize.
So I, I, I kind of like, I like the Socratic method, and I like to understand why. So why do we have a public water distribution system in Malden? You know, other communities in the suburbs have well water. We do not have that. Earlier tonight, we had the Mystic River Water Show Association, Friends of Malden River, MIT come in, talking about the old industrial pass that we used to have along the Malden River. You know, that, that industrial pass and the contaminants that, that produced, as well as the fact that we are, have very close proximity to the ocean, makes our groundwater unpalatable, non-potable, you can't drink it. One, it's contaminated from the industrial uses, and two, you have saltwater infiltration. So you can't build wells, you can't have wells. So you need to have a public water system. As we know, it's 100 years old, it's, it's falling apart, it's corroding, so it needs to be replaced. When it was initially put in, we had dirt roads, and you didn't have to deal with the second part of this conversation of repaving the roads. You just dug up the road, you put in the pipe, and you put the dirt back. And people dealt with what I guess they called potholes at the time, but they probably were more like trenches. And I think that, and you alluded to this, I think that we need to have tough conversations with our residents about what is the priority? Is the priority to have safe drinking water and have public safety and having our police and our firefighters able to have the water pressure that they need in all parts of the city? Or is it to have pristine roads? I, I don't think it's 100% either-or, but I think that when we have these conversations about how much money we're spending and how fast we're spending and, and what we're prioritizing, I think that the tough conversations need to be had. The numbers that you laid out, $335 a linear foot for the water main replacement, and then $400 for the road reconstruction. I mean, it doesn't take a mathematician to realize that if you focus on the water main replacement, you can do twice as many roads if you prioritize the water main replacement. I have a question about cost savings. Is it possible, I know that Yem and I, or Engineer Lipp and I, spoke about this on Main Street and some of the larger streets that have very large water mains that you don't replace, just because they're so large and the cost is just so, cost prohibitive. Have we thought about, and is there any cost savings potential by lining our water mains rather than doing full replacements?
So certainly, that's a, that's an option, as you mentioned, with a, a larger main on a larger road with fewer service lines coming off of it, where you go through, you clean the, you know, you clean the pipe and then you line it, right? And, and, you know, you line it in place. And these, these, if you look at where these are all located, they're, they're smaller mains in residential areas with too many services coming off of them for that to be a viable option. So...
Do you know what, what, how wide the pipe, or what the diameter of the pipe has to be before it can be a, a lining process?
Yeah. I mean, Steve, is there a 12-inch plus 10?
So 10 and, and higher, we, is there a cost savings there, if you could?
Oh, sure. I mean, you're not having to dig up, you're not having to dig up the road for the most part, right? So you're, you know, you're accessing it from several points and you're, yeah, I mean, there's, there's a huge cost savings, there's no doubt about it. It's just that with these ones that we're talking about, where you're also dealing with the lead service lines, you know, you're trying to kill two birds with one stone, if you will. And so that's why they're just not, they're not candidates. Yeah, if you didn't have that lead service line piece and the main were larger, or you had fewer of the service lines, where you might get yourself 300 or 400 yards before you get to a service line, like, maybe you run into a Main Street in places, then, you know, it's more of a viable option, but not with these streets.
Understood. What, what, I think that it's really important for us to have the in-house knowledge of this, and, and have a very close working relationship with the MWRA, because, and I'm not saying this about Steve at all, but I do think that in public construction, I think there is a, a incentive to have it be more substantial, because you're able to make more money off that, than a smaller project that would generate less revenue for the contractors. And I'm not saying that this is the relationship we have by any means, but I think it's something that, the in-house knowledge on how we can maintain our water distribution system is really important, to make sure that we have the checks and balances there to make sure that we're using our dollars in the most efficient manner. I know you agree to that.
Yeah, I think it's a, but honestly, Counsel, it's, it's absolutely a constant, right? So the folks at Engineers will tell you, and I think if Jack Russell were here today, he'd say, I've been telling you guys this for the last 25 years before I left, right? So it, it's just about balancing out the priorities and the cost. I think that's, I don't think anybody's motivated by anything other than doing the right thing, but the right thing isn't black and white when there's a cost to that right thing.
And, and decades of deferred maintenance.
Yeah, that's right.
And it's the same thing regarding with public buildings.
Right. We've got 75, 80 years before anyone thought about anything in the roads, right? So in an ideal world, we've been putting money aside over the course of those 75, 80 years, but we know that that didn't, it wasn't reality.
So you brought up that question about revenue or, 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 or money. Are there any other revenue sources that we can tap into to expand the program, as Counselor Winslow has, has, and has talked about?
Well, I think the, you mean, outside of the...
Outside of the ones that you've identified. I mean, obviously, we can do the water sewer enterprise fund, which would mean we increase water and sewer rates. Is there, are there any other ways that we can generate more revenue to, to be able to do more water main and lead pipe replacement?
Yeah. I mean, look, the two sources, right, are either through the water sewer enterprise fund, which has always been used because it's directly targeted to the work being done, right? And that's not just here in Malden, that's across every other city. Tries to, to look at the water sewer rates and enterprise fund as being a self-sustaining entity, right? It, it, it can't be used for anything that's not water and sewer related, but at the same time, I'd say that, you know, most cities, you know, restrict the work that they do to that, that they can pay for within that resource. So it's always an option, I guess, to sit there and say, if you had extra money on the general fund side, you know, you could go ahead and supplement it with that. I think you see that a little bit with the Chapter 90 money on the roads. But I mean, that, that'd be the other option, is to say, is the capacity to make something not a priority on the, the general fund side to, to fund it, but not have it be funded through water rates, you know? And then you get into a whole philosophical discussion about whether or not general revenue should be supporting an enterprise fund that's supposed to be self-sustaining, you know? So it's a, it's a bit of a, bit of a back and forth.
So I, I, I know that we talked about the MWRA loans. I know the sewer program has debt forgiveness built into it. I know, we've spoken, or I've spoken with Fred Lasky, the, the, I think, executive director or head of the MWRA, about starting a similar program for water mains. I don't know if they have the same incentive, because the big incentive with the sewers is because they want to keep groundwater out of it, they don't want to treat more sewage than they need to. But it'd be great if there was a, a debt forgiveness bond program that the MWRA had, that we could kind of take advantage of, because there's no debt forgiveness in this.
There's not. And it's from my experience, and, and Steve can come on up and maybe speak to it, that they kind of rotate these programs in and out, right? Sometimes they have ones that have some forgiveness, and at times they, they don't, right? There's...
Yeah. In, in my professional career, the MWRA program on the water side has traditionally been a loan program. There is no grant, whereas on the wastewater side, it's like you say, they have a grant component and, and a loan component. And the grant component varies the percentages. You know, there have been times where it's been 75% loan, 25% grant. Now they're up to about 55, 45, so it varies. But there's, to my knowledge, there, there's no program available through the MWRA where there would be a grant component to the borrowing.
One of the things that we could do as a city, or as a council, is we could maybe pass a resolution that maybe I'll propose next week, that our legislative delegation work on Beacon Hill or with the MWRA, trying to put pressure to create a system like that or a program like that. Because I think that there are a lot of gateway communities, a lot of communities like Malden, that have very expensive infrastructure that suburban communities don't have, that we have to maintain, and we just don't have the resources to do.
So the only thing to keep in mind, and it's just a weird system that we live in, is anything that the MWRA creates for a program that subsidizes something at the local level, gets built back into the MWRA budget and passed back on to us in the form of the rates that we pay. So it's, it's a little bit of a pay it direct, a pay it indirect thing, but, but there's no, any forgiveness they do gets built into ultimately their, their operating expenses. And granted, it gets spread across a big base, but if they do it enough, then everybody's kind of paying for their own forgiveness in an indirect way. So just something to keep in mind, you know? Unless the state were to fund something outside of that mechanism, so we should, you know, make sure that we're clear that we're not asking to just build more into, into our rate from the MWRA.
Absolutely. And the last thing I said I would like to ask for, and this has been mentioned multiple times by Counselor Condon, Counselor Matheson, as well as Di Maria, if we could have an Excel, the Excel that you guys use, that you'd use to keep track of all this, if you could provide us an update on a quarterly basis, or whenever something significant happens, it would just be really easy and helpful for us to open up our computer, have every, the list of all water mains and all the roads, the age of them, the quality, the diameter. And then I think it would make us more educated, so that we don't necessarily have to constantly ask you these questions every time you come in. I think you guys have provided this in the past. I just think it's the, the, having it provided on a regular basis, being like, hey, this is the list. Here you go.
So, so I think the source for that would actually be GIS. Steve Ahmet does a pretty good job of keeping that up to date. It's not perfect, but, but that's generally the source that we'll go back and look towards. And, and I know that he's been pretty diligent about updating it through all the work that was done on the CDM and the work happening. So maybe we just need to talk about a regular reporting mechanism that, you know, extracts that data and puts it in a reportable format, because that, that all exists. Yeah, that's what we, all the data you see here was pulled from there.
Yeah, just like, like you said, a data dump, a regular data dump, where we can filter it by, you know, all the different things we have to filter by. Thank you again for all the hard work. I, I hope my comments and my tough questioning doesn't discourage you by any means. I just would like to find more revenue and more, and more budget for you guys to do more, more, more water mains. So, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Murphy.
Thank you, Madam President. This will be quick, because I know we are going to have some in-depth discussions about this when we get into finance, having been through this many times now. But I do have to say, I agree with some of the comments that my predecessors have raised about having a little bit more information, which I know you folks will be willing to provide. a little bit more information, which I know you folks will be willing to provide come the next meeting, but a list of the streets that do have the older pipes. I know that I do have a few streets that I continue, my residents continually ask me about, and they'll tell me how old the street is and how old the pipe is, and they really want their street fixed. And obviously, I don't see it on this list, so as Counselor Crowe said, I mean, at least I have some streets on the list. But, you know, we are, you know, asked a lot of questions by our constituents, and it is our job, you know, to basically advocate for them and for their needs. Although I have heard many times throughout the past number of years that there are a number of issues that go into some of these decisions, you know, such as creating a continuous link and getting water pressure up to the hills, et cetera, black fire hydrants. I would like to see a list of streets in Ward Five, the oldest starting first, working our way down, as well as black fire hydrants. Counselor Matheson has brought up, those are, you know, a continuous issue that we have with residents. I know I've had conversations with the fire department, and our city is safe, that, you know, the lines do stretch, you know, they have 30-foot, 300-foot rolls of hose, and, you know, from what I understand, everybody is safe, there is a working fire hydrant within a reasonable distance from all of the homes. However, having a black fire hydrant in front of your house is very unsettling. So it would be nice to be able to just comment, you know, to our residents that, you know, we are, you know, through this effort too, we've worked down another 20 black fire hydrants, et cetera, you know, and you are safe. And, you know, yes, your street isn't getting done, but when you look out and you say to someone, which I believe is kind of what Counselor Crowe was alluding to, your street's not going to get done for five years. That's a tough sell for us as counselors to have to deliver that message to people. So it would be really nice to have a full understanding of how these decisions were made and why they were made. I understand there was a process behind it, and I think if you could come to that next meeting and maybe articulate the overall view of like, okay, this section was taken because it will do this. And yes, some of these streets have newer pipes, but they all hook together as one system, and therefore they had to be in the plan. I think that would be very helpful for us. So I don't expect to answer anything tonight, but I'd just like a little more information when we see you in finance.
Got you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Spatafora.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to, you know, first thank, thank you and the rest of the team for a present, a great presentation. I think it's good that we had this before. The finance committee, I also think it's perfect timing, because we're all coming up on that time of the year when the budget gets sent down from the state. And the best example I can say, it's a water balloon, meaning, you know, we have to balance our budget here every year, and we hear there's never enough money. Counselor Condon made the point, you know, our new schools are no longer new. Every time we try to put a little bit, you know, when the mayor was Counselor Christiansen, that was, he was always banging his fist on the table, saying, "We have to put away money for the upkeep of our buildings." But, you know, when the, when the time comes and people want raises, or they want a piece of equipment, or they want more school funding, they point to that fund and say, "We should get that." And I'm not saying it's right or wrong, but everybody's going to come in here in a couple weeks and say, "I need this, I need this, and I need this." And I agree with all of them, most of the time, we wish we could just stroke the checkbook and do it. But I think the hard decision is on this, because it is a public safety issue, it's clean drinking water, we clearly didn't do enough in the past, and to make up for our, you know, either bad habits or just lack of knowledge, like you said, you know, 50 years ago, nobody was thinking about this. My question to you, Ron, I know you said other mechanisms, but, you know, Counselor Matheson always says, "You put it to the people." Could we, could we double the 15 and put it out there as a special revenue fund that is paid an additional tax essentially and let the residents vote on it? Essentially, they vote with, they're going to, they're going to have to vote with their, you know, they're going to decide with their votes if they're willing to spend, say, another 15 or 20 million dollars on taxes to say, help pay this down. You think it's something that's worth entertaining?
So I think the challenge you'd have, that you can see even for a large amount of money, 15 million dollars...
It's not going to give you a bag for the buck.
You don't get a ton of, let's face it, right? You don't get a ton of linear feet, you don't get a ton of homes. And so at the end of the day, if I'm voting, my street's not on there.
My street's not on there. You're right.
Okay, yes. And the fact of the matter is, if trying to get to a majority, your number would have to be like 140 million dollars in order to be able to get to. So it's a good democratic way of doing it, I just don't know, given the staggering costs involved here, that you'd be able to get enough support. It would be, generally speaking, dependent upon where you fell.
Yeah, and I say that as, you know, because at the end of the day, we're not going to find it in our budget. And if we find it, it's going to be a million dollars, and that's going to be a half a street. I mean, it is. The state's not going to give us free money, and I think the challenge will be, yeah, I think the schools are coming off, but we're also, we're adding some new facilities to the, to the community, right? We're going to have to look outward, meaning we're going to have to say to the residents, if we want to do this faster, we're going to have to go to you and have you help us with this. I mean, the number you did it was, it's like when they figure out hotel rooms, you do it by the door.
Yeah, that's right.
It's $50,000.
A key.
A key. $50,000 a household, which, which is nuts, which is nuts. So I just think that the discussion's going to be, is I'm not looking in our budget to find the money, because I think we're going to find nothing that's worth it. And maybe the state, maybe the feds help us, but I think we have to start entertaining and talking to the people out there, "Hey, if you really want to borrow $100 million, we're going to have to have you pay some money to do it." Because I think that's the only way, to Counselor Winzo's point, we can't, we're never going to catch up, and, you know, if it isn't, the schools, again, this is not me picking on, you know, the fire department wants two new fire trucks, they're a million bucks and they're half a million. The school department's going to want new money. I know some of the schools are in desperate need of envelopes, roofs, what I mean envelopes, the envelope of the building, you know, windows, they're coming up in this span. So to me, we have to go to the residents and let them at least get their opinion, because I'm not going to say it, it's not coming internal, and it's not there. It's not there.
You know, I think there's a, there's a gentleman that used to be on the radio talking about financial planning, and he used to always say, you know, "When was the best, when's the best time to plant a tree? 100 years ago."
Yes.
"When's the next best time? Today." Right? So the fact of the matter is, today is here, and I think as you have the dialogue in finance, there's going to be a healthy discussion to say, can you land on a place where at least you're no longer falling behind on a 100-year replacement schedule? Now, that's not going to get everything replaced, but at least you've stopped the bleeding, and then you can see how, you know, how you can make incremental progress over time. But that's an easy mathematical number to figure out, right? It's almost 1.3 miles a year. Anything less than that, you're falling behind. If you can get to that place, and that's north of where we're at even with this proposal, right? If you can get to that place, then at least you feel like, okay, you know, now where do I go from here? Again, it's not an answer to the overall problem, but it's not going to allow the problem to continue to get, you know, incrementally worse, you know? It would have been a better discussion to have 75 years ago, but...
Yeah, I mean, even if you double this, you know, you go to 30 million, that's still over 10% of our budget. I mean, that's a massive number.
Yeah.
So that's why I just think it's important that we have to start probably looking to real, the only real mechanism I see unfortunately is we probably have to go to the residents to make it up.
Yeah, I don't know how, yeah, I don't know how. I mean, you're, so your overall water and sewer enterprise fund, I'm going to use around numbers, 25 million bucks, right? If you, again, if you tried to do 1.2, 1.3 miles a year, you know, you're talking about $7 million somewhere in that neighborhood. You can see it's a pretty big order of magnitude, right? If you just did that amount of an investment per year, right? Because after you bond for the first few years, eventually it all catches up, and you're paying the equivalent of an annual cost every year, so...
Oh, you're cutting somewhere else in the budget to do it, which, which, so somebody's going to be happy, somebody's not going to be happy, so. I appreciate that, and I look forward to the discussion. I think it's important it's started now, so everybody can start thinking about it, especially with these daunting numbers of 50,000 bucks a door.
Staggering.
Staggering. I appreciate it. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Counselor Matheson.
Thanks. For the second and last time. I think that there's an assumption we're making, which is that every 100 years, you will have had to have changed every pipe. And I don't know if that's true or not, I'm looking to the subject matter experts, perhaps these new pipes, the ductile iron, maybe they have a service life of greater than 100 years. We know that the old-fashioned pipes have lasted 100 years or more. Even some wooden mains are still around that have lasted over 100 years. So I don't think this is something that's going on in perpetuity. It might be a different formula that we pursue after we replaced all the cast iron pipes. Is that true, Mr. O'Neil? Is that true? That the new pipes last longer? I guess that's my que... I'm not, wait, Mr. Holden, if you want to answer, go ahead.
Hold on.
Let me, let me be the bear with bad news. Unfortunately, Dr. Lyon pipe, according to the American Waterworks Association, has an expected useful life, or life expectancy of 75 years.
Okay.
Which is actually less than the cast iron pipe of old. It's like, it's like everything in today's world. You know, you had fine craftsmanship and workmanship back in the day where they built product to last. It, believe it or not, is a shorter lifestyle, lifecycle. Now...
Will it last longer? Then, yeah, maybe. That's where you were going next, right?
And we all know that, you know, things last. I was coming down here today, and I was behind an old Lincoln Town Car. It must have been 1974.
I was just going to use the car analogy.
Some things last for much longer than their life.
They say in Cuba, they're all driving these old Fords, and they've maintained them perfectly. My other question, thanks Steve, is the lead service lines, right? We haven't talked about this yet, and I guess I'm looking at you, Maria, because you came up for the presentation not long ago about lead service lines. How many do we have left? I know that the DEP put us under a consent order a few years ago citing us for having so many, so many of these things. And then I believe Counselor Winslow had said at this pace, we're looking at about 12 years before we replace them all. And that's not looking back the last four years, that's 12 years from today. My question's simple. Do we know how many lead service lines are left on the public and private side? Is that something that's handy?
We can get you that number.
No, I know you've got it.
I think you're in the 2,600 and, you know, plus range.
Yep.
Right? So I think, you know...
Is that public and private together?
No, that, well, that was...
Is that just the public side?
Yeah, I think that was just the public side, but I think we can get you that. Again, this is helpful, because we can make sure we build the information into when coming for finance, because this is...
Exactly.
Yep, so...
And I took notes during the beginning of your presentation, you said 306 lead service lines will be replaced with this work.
That's right.
So...
And then they'll continue to do the work that's being done every year by the DPW replacing what they can replace, putting out a project for a private contractor, which together gets them north of 200, you know, lines on any given year, so, you know...
200 is the pace that we've been on?
200 plus, you know, 200 plus. I mean, the DPW's done a great job of, of doing work internally to subsidize what can be done by sending out a tour contract.
Because a few times, my colleagues have mentioned, you know, clean drinking water or safe drinking water, I think lead goes right into the heart of that discussion.
Absolutely.
And I don't think it can be neglected when you're talking about millions of dollars in a five-year scope of work. You want to make sure that you're hitting all the points.
Yep.
You know, you don't want to leave something out, particularly something as important as lead pipes, which we recognize local, state, and federal level being a very important health issue.
And that's the only silver lining, I shouldn't say that, but in this entire thing, that you're killing two things, not, not just one, right? So you're dealing with that, that pipe, and you're dealing with the lead service line at the same time.
But not a lot of them, not a lot of them.
Nope.
All right. That's what I've got. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Winslow.
Yeah, I know we, I guess on the consent order, we're required to do 150 a year. And I mean, I think that, you know, we had talked about before that the ordinance requiring replacement during transfer, that's really kicked things up, but there's, you know, this does some part of it, but it's, it's not the 150 a year, but there's other ways. But I just kind of want to wrap up, you know, kind of some of my thinking. I know, working in City of Gloucester, a different situation, where they actually had to do their water supply and their piping. They had a situation where they came very close to losing Gorton's of Gloucester, their biggest business, because they were underinvesting in their water, water treatment system. They had to spend over $20 million. We're in a different situation, but it is the type of thing to think of. If, if you don't have water in your home, you can't occupy your home, so it is the type of thing that we have to think of making sure. I mean, hopefully, we do find that, you know, our pipes are lasting longer than that, but, but, you know, we're, every year we go out and fall further and further behind, we run the risk of all of a sudden having long stretches or neighborhoods that don't have that, that water, or fires happening. So I think it is important to think of, are we dealing with this aggressively enough? And at least getting to the point where we're, you know, I just, like I say, we'll have, if we, if we follow this route of 1% a year of our pipes over, older than 75, then we're, 100 years from now, we're still going to have pipes 175 years old, that's going to be the average. So, so having a goal that's maybe more aggressive, you know, like to me, I think it's worthy of the discussion. We do have to find what works for the community, but there's, there are, can be consequences of substantially underinvesting, and then all of a sudden, at one big push, you have to put in millions and millions of dollars. And like Gloucester's half the size of our community, so it would be the equivalent of having to put, come up with $40 million at once to maintain your biggest employer, and those are the type of risks we can have to take if we're not investing. So just wanted to, you know, point that out, and something we need to think about. Thanks.
I was just going to comment that at the pace the Malden River folks are going, we might be able to just grab the water from there at some point in time and do the whole system over, but...
I see no other lights, Ron. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Next order of business.
Order that the firm of Roselli and Clark appear before the city council for presentation and discussion of the fiscal year 2018 city audit.
Counselor Matheson.
Thank you, Chair. So the FY '18 audit should be completed soon. This is maybe the latest that the audit has ever come out, but there was some reconciliation that it had to happen first. Audit firms often invite the communities they service to come in for an exit interview, where they explain what they found in the audit, what all the weaknesses are, where the strengths are. Roselli and Clark has offered this in the past. I think we would all benefit from hearing a discussion from them about the financial health of Malden when their audit is complete, so I'd like to ask them to come in and give that presentation. I'll make a motion to adopt this order and invite Roselli and Clark to come in for an exit interview, when they're complete.
On Counselor Matheson's motion to invite Roselli and Clark, seconded by Counselor De Maria, all those in favor?[1631.21]